Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Opens Meeting Acts. Notice hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and irregular meeting on Tuesday, October 16, 2018, at 5:40 PM and at 6:00 PM. Texas Government Code to Security of Advice with Respect to the City Commission's Authority, Powers, Purposes, and Obligation in Connection with the Appointment of a City Manager under Article 5 of the City Charter. Executive Session B, Consideration and Appropriate Action Pursuant to Section 551.074 Texas Government Code to Deliberate the Appointment, Employment, and Duties of a Public Officer, the City Manager for the City of Brownsville, Texas, under Article 5 of the City Charter. Executive Session C, Consideration and Appropriate Action Pursuant to Section 551.074 Texas Government Code to Deliberate the Appointment, Employment, and Duties of a Public Officer, the City Attorney for the City of Brownsville, Texas, under Article 5 of the City Charter.
Mayor, will we go into Executive Session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have here in Brownsville, and we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And Lord God, facing this election season, we ask you to lead and guide every voter and cause them to really investigate every candidate and their records, Lord God. Give us the leaders that we need at every level, from city to county to state and federal. Lord, for this meeting here tonight, we ask you to lead and guide the mayor and commissioners, especially lead and guide them concerning the positions that we need to fill. Give them wisdom and direction, and Lord, I ask you to keep us all in unity, doing the best for the city, and loving each other, hearing each other out with respect, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
We have action on Executive Item B, consideration and appropriate action if any to appoint a permanent city manager for the City of Brownsville, Texas, to approve a contract of employment to set a start date and related matters.
I move to appoint Mr. Noel Bernal as permanent city manager and to approve the negotiated employment contract between Mr. Bernal and the City of Brownsville.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Bernal.
Next, we have the mayor's activity update.
I have no report, thank you.
Commissioners' activity update.
Mayor, I just wanted to take the opportunity to welcome all our UTRGV students that are here doing their political science hours. Congratulations to them, and you picked a good meeting.
Mayor, are you there? Mayor, I just wanted to let the public know that in District 2 this week, we have been very successful, thanks to the Health Department and the Brownsville Bike Patrol. We have placed multiple cameras up in alleyways and neighborhoods that have been facing illegal dumping. It is so severe, I can't even tell you. People who are having toilets, mattresses, furniture, filing cabinets, all kinds of things constantly being dumped in their alleyways and in their backyards. And I just want to let the public know that the City of Brownsville is actively pursuing anybody that does that. If you're having these problems in your neighborhoods, please notify your city commissioner via email or call 546 HELP. And we will get our mobile cameras up in your neighborhood, up and running. They are so clear that they are, the pictures we have are strong enough to take somebody to court and prosecute. Some of the dumping is recurring. It's not just somebody that lives in your neighborhood that's cutting trees and throwing it. No, these are people that constantly and habitually are dumping in contracting companies, landscaping companies. And so, we need your help to prosecute. I feel like some of this stuff is so severe, it should be prosecuted further than municipal court. It should go to the district attorney's office, and we should prosecute that way so that this stops in our community. This is our home, this is our backyard. Whether it's your backyard, it's still my backyard. Whether it's my backyard, it's still your backyard. So, work with us to help prosecute these people and make our community stronger and better. So, thank you, city staff, and Mike Lopez and Art Rodriguez, Health Department, Bike Squad, and all of my constituents who have been helping me tackle this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would like to thank and let everyone know, last week, we hosted the first Active Plan Tour. Thanks to some great guidance from the Rails to Trails Conservancy and funding from them, we were able to host Texas Monthly, The Daily Beast, The Austin Chronicle. Dorian Anderson, who's a world-renowned biking and birding expert, just returned from Columbia establishing their ecotourism plan. Two, four days of biking and kayaking are best spots in Cameron County. I have to thank the Parks Department for loaning us some drivers, and Eva Garcia, our BikePeds Park Planner, who did a great deal of work helping us coordinate that. Ramiro Gonzalez, who are working with the other cities in the Active Plan to coordinate lunches and dinners that they helped pay for. And also, the contingency from Matamoros, led by Mauricio Ibarra, with Implan. BC Sud Salud, which is one of the 20 bicycle groups in Matamoros, enveloped us in a very warm peloton as we rode through Matamoros. Garcia's gave us a delicious dinner, and the vice consul gave us a tour of the new consulate downtown. Implan shared with us their plans for bike trails along the Mexican side of the levee and through Matamoros that will one day hopefully connect into the United States. Every single journalist said to us as they were leaving that we exceeded their expectations every day. They came expecting to do one article, and they are now saying they will each more than likely do a series of articles because they were so impressed with Brownsville and the surrounding area. So, thank you to all of the folks that worked so hard to put something together that was very meaningful.
Thank you, Commissioner.
City Managers' update.
Mayor and Commissioners, a couple of things. 546 HELP is now available through text. If you see tall grass, if you see drainage problems, please text it, and text it to 546 HELP, and it'll get it in our system pretty quick, too. Before, prior, it was through email, but we want to make it easy when you take a picture and send it. So, go check on our website for 546 HELP. Second thing is, we have mosquito spraying advisories. If you go on to the City Secretary's site or even on the city's website, you can text, you put your email or your text, so you can get alert when we're spraying in your neighborhood. It allows you to know that we're coming this way, so please use that. And that's all I have at this time.
Very good. I think Santana dressed up for us tonight.
Next, we have the presentations. The Employee of the Month, Elizabeth Preciado, Payroll Specialist from Public Works Administration.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, this evening, I'd like to present the Employee of the Month of October 2018, Ms. Elizabeth Preciado, from Public Works Department. Ms. Preciado was hired in 1994 as an administrative technician one at the Human Resources Department. During her employment at the Human Resources, she was promoted to an Assistant Administrative Specialist, and in 2000, Ms. Preciado was hired as an administrative specialist for Public Works Landfill Division. She worked there for about a year, she left us. She went to work for the Purchasing Department as a purchasing specialist, and in 2017, Ms. Preciado was transferred to the Public Works Department as our payroll technician, specialist. After 17 years, Ms. Preciado returns back to Public Works as an experienced employee. She constantly demonstrates her good work ethics, utilizes her job knowledge to ensure the department continues effortlessly with her projects. Public Works is very fortunate and grateful to have an employee like Ms. Elizabeth Preciado as one of our employees. Elizabeth, as the Employee of the Month, receive a wristwatch. An engraved plaque.
Very good.
Felt in. And she also gets one paid day off of her choice, and she'll also be featured in our Brownsville TV Channel 12. She also becomes eligible to be selected as the Employee of the Year in our annual employee banquet in December.
Well done.
Good evening, everyone. I just would like to thank everyone in the City of Brownsville that nominated me, and for the award, especially our Public Works Department, management, and staff. I am truly grateful and honored to receive the award for my work performed in the department. Winning the award would not have been possible without the inspiration I have received from my coworkers, from whom I'm very respectful, and whom I have gained the strength to challenge myself to perform better every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the presentation for Water and Wastewater Capital Improvement Plan Semiannual Progress Report.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, like always, thank you for having me up here this evening. We're just going to discuss impact fees briefly, and everything we do, choosing to have impact fees, everything we do is governed by Chapter 395. So, one of the things that's required from us is, we have this get-together a couple of times a year, just to talk about the status of impact fees, where things are going, and what's happened. So, we are going to do that. We're going to talk about, first, the CIP program. We'll talk about the capital programs, the projects as of June 30th of this year. So, we're looking at six-month periods, and then we'll look at the service units that have been generated recently, as well as the dollars that are associated with that. So, first, tough to see, but we're looking right now, going over those impact fee projects. These are the capital program projects that are growth-related. So, from the water standpoint, these are the projects that are still onboard, growth-related projects, and those dollars, when the capital program was developed, for the master plan was developed, for the impact fees that you have in place now, were about $29 million worth of projects. So, in that time period, all of these projects right now are still in the planning phases. Their, I think, majority of them are ready to get started, but as things have changed, either they've added, subtracted, or just the dollars associated with it has changed over the years. So, right now, these projects are about $34,500,000, so a difference of about $5.6 million from when the capital program was developed to where we're at right now on the water And then, we're not looking at any changes in the land use assumption plan. The way the process works is really, every five years, in having impact fees, we do the whole process over again. So, every five years, we'll take a look at the land use assumptions and the capital programs. Right now, everything is staying where it's at, and if you remember your prior impact fees, you had one impact fee for the whole system. So, and when we developed impact fees, when you set impact fees this last time, we split up the areas. So, you have this area, whole downtown area is Area 1, and then we have 2 and 3, all the surrounding areas, and the port area is the rest of the system. So, currently, where you're at right now, you're Area 1, the downtown area is $300 per equivalent service unit, and then the rest of your system, the rest of Brownsville, is $600 per equivalent service unit. So, nothing's changed, everything the same as what you already know it. Then, for the wastewater side, same thing, capital program. These are all the impact fee growth-related projects that went into the development. So, mostly what you have right now, lift station work, is the majority of it for the wastewater side. And what you have left, initially, is about $40 million worth of projects. Right now, where you stand as of June 30th, about $38 million, so a difference dropped about $1.7 million reduction in what your wastewater side is. Then, just going over it again, things that you already know, things that are in place, no changes to the land use assumption plan. Your Area 1, downtown area, $500 is your impact fee, and then the rest of the system, $1,000. So, let's look at something that actually is really going to give you a little more information of what's happening on your system, what's happening with the growth and the impact fees. So, this is through the six-month period of the end of the year of last year. You've added, from a meter standpoint, you added 130 meters through December 31st. When we talk about equivalent service units, that's, what are those 130 meters related to three-quarter inch meters? So, basically, we're saying that's 191 residential units, or three-quarter inch meters, is what that represents. So, and what you assessed in impact fees was $25,650. This was through December of last year. So, now, we're looking through June, and you can tell substantially you've picked up things. So, you added 545 meters from January through June of this year. So, big difference, basically, the equivalent of 727 houses is what that is, three-quarter inch meters. So, and you assessed, not collected, but you assessed $405,000 through the first six months of the year. This is on the water side. You can see, this is just to give you an idea of where these are coming from. You notice the majority of it, some of it from downtown, Zone 1, inside area, and then the blue, majority of where your numbers, your meters are being added is in Zone 2. Then, on the wastewater side, so through the end of last year, you added 222 connections for sewer, which is equivalent roughly of 263 houses, is what you added for sewer through December of last year. $230,500 was the assessed impact fees with that. Then, same as what we just saw with water, through June of this year, then you add another 894 sewer connections. $1,076 houses is really what you did through the first six months of this year. So, large, large difference. And then assess $949,660 on the sewer side. So, big jump, big drive through the first of this year, and obviously, you have a lot of things that are happening now. Nothing that's surprising you. Again, just like we saw in water, Zone 2 is handling most of the growth there, little bit of it downtown, Zone 1. And then, finally, impact fee fund activity, this is what you have, what you're carrying on the books right now. You started the year, this is the first six months of the year, so you started the year this year at $4.9 million. Roughly collected about the same in water and wastewater, so collected $272,305 through the first six months. Refunds, when we're talking refunds, it ends up here, that's money going in, money coming out, it's money you're paying back, and some of this, a large amount of this, is grant money that you brought in to pay for connections, too. So, you refund, you actually added to the fund $1.1 million, and then expended $1,600, interest earned about $42,000. So, right now, you have an ending balance as of June 30th of $6.3 million. So, and this is where you stand, just to give you that picture, that six-month picture of what's happening with you, what's happening with your system.
Very good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
We see, I'm sorry, we see that, when we started this years ago, we're starting to see that we're kind of catching up. We're almost there. What would your assessment be, your opinion, as to when we would be able to reassess and probably be able to reevaluate the numbers?
You have to reevaluate the numbers fairly soon, because it's on a five-month period. So, really, what you're going to start doing is probably within a year's time, you're going to start the land use, and we talked about the land use assumption sitting still right now, probably within a year's time, you'll start the land use assumption plan, again, develop another one. That's really going to be tied to what's happening, what do you see, as well as what is your plan? Because you also, you want to drive that land use assumption plan. You don't want somebody coming in going, well, you know, the way the national average is, is you're growing here, and 15% of that's commercial, and 60% of that's residential, and so on. So, that's something y'all really want to take part of. I mean, you do that, and you own it, and it's yours, and you want to drive how that grows and what it looks like? Because then you come, and the next step in the process is building the actual capital program, and the master plan to go along with that. So, that whole process will start in about a year's time, because then, by the end of the five-year period, you need to have new impact fees in place. So, that's really, so you're not long for starting and taking a look at it again, which is a good question.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Appreciate it.
Motion to acknowledge, right? Or? It's a presentation. Oh, sorry.
No, no. We got item number five next.
Yes. Consent agenda items A through C.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the- Public hearings, public hearing number six. Public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number 235-2018-044 to rezon from Dwelling A to Dwelling G for Lot 4, Block 3, Brownsville Country Club, Section 1, located at 534 Salva Tierra Street.
Good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. This first case tonight, the property is 0.22 acres. They're looking to rezon from Dwelling A to Dwelling G. This is going to change their setbacks, including the rear setback, which with A is 25 feet, and with G it's 3.5. Here is the area where you can see in north, south, east, and west, there are single-family dwellings. There's also apartments to the east. Here is the zoning map. This subdivision is mostly Dwelling A, however, there is an existing Dwelling G, a little bit away to the north. To the south, along 802, it's going to be Fourth Commercial. As well as to the east, it's going to be Fourth Commercial and some apartment zoning. There were 24 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. Here is the 200-foot mailing radius. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from Dwelling A to Dwelling G.
Anyone here on this issue? Not all, entertain a motion to close?
Would it close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Next, we have public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number 235-2018-045 to rezon from Dwelling Z to Medium Retail Z for 20.782 acres out of a 31.58 acre tract in Block 18, El Habdin Heights subdivision, City of Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, located at 555 Dr. Hugh Emerson Road.
This property is 20.782 acres. It's currently zoned Dwelling Z, and they're asking it to be changed to Medium Retail 3C-Z. The proposed use is for a church office. To the north, there's undeveloped land, single-family dwellings, and some industrial business. To the west, there is undeveloped land, single-family dwellings and apartments. To the south, undeveloped land, single-family dwellings, and to the east, undeveloped land and single-family dwellings. Here is the radius map, excuse me, here is the zoning map. To the west is in city limits. What's in white to the north, south, and east is outside of city limits. To the west, it's mostly dwelling, however, there is some apartment-specific use. Here's the 200-foot radius map. There are 21 mailouts and zero written opposition. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from Dwelling Z to Medium Retail Z, 3C-Z.
Anyone here on this issue?
Would it close, public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight.
Public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number 235-2018-046-S to allow a mobile vendor food court, a general retail use, in general retail X for Lot 5, Block 1, Starr Acres, in addition to the City of Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, located at 6305 Paredes Line Road.
This property is one acre. They are asking for a specific use permit for a mobile vendor food court, which is a food truck park. They have a previous one approved. This is at the intersection of Denit and Paredes Line. To the north, there is undeveloped land, single-family dwelling and commercial businesses. To the west, undeveloped land, single-family dwelling. To the south, single-family dwelling, commercial businesses. And to the east, undeveloped land and single-family dwellings and industrial business. Here's the zoning map. This property is currently general retail 4C. To the north, there is more general retail 4C as well as dwelling retail. To the south and to the west, it's mostly dwelling. To the east, there's dwelling as well as medium industrial. Here's the 200-foot radius map. There were nine mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. Here is the specific use. As I mentioned, this has a previous specific use that was adopted. This is an active business, it's a broken sprocket. The previous specific use did allow four food truck parks. This would allow six, I'm sorry, four food trucks. This would allow six.
The sprocket drives?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Oh, would you have something to say?
This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and P&amp;Z does support the specific use permit to allow a mobile vendor food court and general retail X, 4C-X, with the condition that the property must comply with all city code regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Anyone here on this issue? Okay, Jessica now.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
I'm a little nervous.
Don't be, don't be, don't be nervous.
There's nobody to be nervous of.
Anyways, my name is Gabriela Carrera. I live on the second lot, adjacent to the business, and I am here to oppose their request for the reason that this business has brought, businesses is good for the community, don't get me wrong, however, the area where you're sitting is not the proper area. It is too limited. There's no parking space for their customers, but that's not the point. The point is that it has created a lot of noise in the subdivision, and it has also created a lot of trash. It has brought a lot of litter, and this area is prone to flooding. That is the reason why I'm here. It has brought noise, it has brought traffic, a lot of traffic, because there are not, there's not enough parking space. They are parking, the customers are parking in the gutters and the ditches where drainage is supposed to go. And that's my concern right now. The noise, the litter, and the traffic that it has created since the opening of this business. I mean, I do would like for you two guys to reconsider in giving them the permission to bring in two more food trucks. As it is, my understanding is from the previous hearing, that he's only allowed to have four food trucks in the area. Right now, he has six. On October 6th, when I arrived home, there were six food trucks. And does he have the authority to bring in six, two more food trucks when he has only given permission to have four? That's my concern right now.
Well, we appreciate your coming forward. Don't get nervous, you're doing fine, okay? Thank you.
And an unrelated topic, we are addressing your drainage issue.
Oh, thank you.
We, engineering has been out there, and we are addressing the drainage issue out to the area.
So, I appreciate you doing that, because there's a lot, a lot of dumping in our area as well. So, thank you for that, and thank you for helping us, because it has been really, really bad for the neighbors.
Thank you for being vigilant and letting us know.
Thank you.
And please reach out, if you do have, if you do happen to see litter, please reach out to us, or to me at least, and we'll make sure to clean it up.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else on this issue?
My question to the administration is, is anyone checking on how many food trucks we got out there at any given point?
Yes, we're very vigilant, because these are the pilot programs, the two food trucks. So, we'll, with that concern, we'll go meet with them as well.
Being that it's a pilot project, if I recall correctly, right?
Yes, there, yeah, there's two, well, that was approved for two, so many food truck parks, yes.
Do we have any progress report that has been provided to the City Commission for saying, you know, what the pilot project, I'm not sure what the duration of- saying, you know, what the, the pilot project, I'm not sure what the, what the duration of the time is, and as to the success, or any traffic situations that might be occurring? I mean, I said, I think all of us are all for, all of those types of amenities, but we don't know what, I'm not familiar with what the latest progress is, and what problems, if any, are being encountered. I haven't received any reports, to my knowledge.
And, and that's where we're at, on our, our part either, Mayor, we haven't received any complaints, I believe, this is the, the first one we've seen for this food truck park. But we can also bring you briefing on, on what the future is for the food truck parks.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm just uncomfortable when I do hear a complaint, and I'd like to figure out, I'd like to know more about it, quite frankly, and I, I'm hoping to encourage the planning and zoning to, you know, I, I, you didn't get any response, though, at this point, if I recall correctly. This is the first time you've heard of this?
She did come to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but we do not have written opposition.
Okay, but if you do get some complaint like that, you know, it might be worthy of your attention to...
Oh, no, we, we, we did, Mayor, we, we do, and so, it's, it's a moving...
Give us a little bit of insight, because this is the first time I think we've heard of any complaints, and...
I've never, yeah, I've never been there, and I've never visited, but I don't know if you have any ordinances that relate to noise in these food parks?
Oh, yes.
Because there are certain hours, and they are close to homes, maybe you can also look at that, just to make sure that we're meeting the standards of the neighborhoods around them.
Yeah, and, and I could, I could probably specifically, I think the owner of this food truck park has, is very, very, comes, comes all, I think he's, we see him planning all the time, so he's very, any, any conversations we have, I'm sure we address this with him, we can be solved as well.
Yeah, I, I thought that was happening. Anyway, this is a public hearing.
I was just saying, I didn't know who, I don't know who he is, but I've heard very good things about his food trucks.
I, I have a question. There's future parking on the back and the rear. How far into the future is that going to be happening?
As of now, that land is for sale. The, the gentleman who does own the broken sprocket does not have the rights to party.
So it's on the, it's on that drawing, but it's not the reality?
So it's, it's a projected future project, so if he does obtain that land, then it will address more of the parking issues, and it will, he will be providing this parking as well as some other amenities, such as volleyball courts and such.
Little bit of a concern. Anyway, this is a public hearing, anyone else here on this issue?
Would you close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table? Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, let's table and take a look at it, and give us a little report. We don't try and to stop anybody or doing, from doing anything, but we also don't want to create a nuisance. I'm kind of concerned about parking and noise, so if you would address those for us, and if any other commissioners does any other requests?
We, we definitely do that, Mayor, when we get that for you, we'll address it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment?
Next, we have the public comment period. We did have one person that signed up, Ms. Irma Sanchez from Amigos del Valle, would please come up?
Did you give me her report?
I didn't give that one, she's having a thing.
I'm just, I'm just here just to tell you who we are, Amigos del Valle, who we serve, and invite, invite you all, whenever you have a chance to come visit us. We serve our senior citizens, we offer meals and wheels, and we serve our, you know, people that don't have any insurance, any Medicaid or anything like that, so we, we open to those people that don't have anything. And that's all that we, that I came to show, and all my support group here, so...
Good for you.
Mr. Benice, yeah, he's one of our board members, so, you know, I, I would like, you know, just to extend an invitation, whoever, whenever you have a chance to come visit us, so that you can know what we are about, and if any of you ever want to come to the road with the, to the deliveries of our home meals, and visit our homebound clients, you know, you're very welcome.
Thank you so much.
I would love to volunteer for the meals and wheels, if you could email me so I can, or I'll email you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you for the invite.
That's all that I came to.
Thank you for the invite.
Irma, thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number 10, consideration action to approve the employment contract of the city attorney.
Motion to approve the employment contract for the city attorney? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number 11, consideration action to appoint or reappoint three members to the airport advisory board.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city commissioners. The airport advisory board has three vacant positions available. The term of the board members are for three years. We've had three applicants for this position, and they are Manuel Agassar, Carl Marx, and Luis Capasos, and we are recommending the city commission appoint the above three applicants to the board.
Mayor, I move to slate the three applicants and appoint all three?
Good, good, they, they worked really hard, Manuel, thank you so much for all your services, and for all three of them. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome back.
Next, we have action item number 12, consideration action on adoption of air service support program for the Brownsville South Padre International Airport.
Again, good evening again. In coordination with the air service consulting firm, we developed an airport, air service support program. The purpose of this program is intended to complement the strategies and objectives of the airport's air service development program. In recruiting new air carriers, encourage incoming carriers to consider expansion and new market development. I believe you've got the program in your packet that you may have reviewed, and the airport recommends approval.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have action item number 13, consideration action on a memorandum of understanding between the City of Brownsville, the Food Bank of the Rio Grande Valley, and the Brownsville Wellness Coalition.
Mayor, city commission, this is an MOU between the three parties, as read. We believe this is the first step in a, in a very fruitful partnership, especially with the Rio Grande, the Food Bank of the RGV. They currently do not have a presence in Cameron County, most of their presence is in FAR. They do have a lot of programs, and I encourage you guys to visit the facility, it's quite a fantastic facility in FAR. So, this is the first step in, in hopefully more talks and negotiations to bring them to, to the City of Brownsville and to Cameron County. So we would like, we ask for your support on this MOU, and we'll report back as, as I think, as the partnership progresses.
Hopefully you can bring us something where they are more active within the City of Brownsville.
Absolutely, that's, that's the goal.
Yep. Motion to...
Would you approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your...
Action item number 14, consideration action to approve resolution number 2018-050 declaring Dean Porter Park as a local historical park.
Good evening, evening, honorable mayor and city commission. Just a few words in regards to both resolutions. We're going to apply for a Lone Star Legacy application. We did it once for Dean Porter about, almost three years ago, and one of the reasons our weak areas on that application was a lack of a local designation, state or national. So at a local level, we can designate our parks, and then just to specify, a Lone Star Legacy Park, which we hope to achieve, is one that holds special prominence in the local community and state. To qualify for consideration, the park must have endured the test of time, and become iconic to those who have visited, played, and rested on its ground. Nominated parks must be at least 50 years old, and meet at least one of the criteria property that represents distinctive design or construction, a park that is associated with historic events or sites, a park that is associated with specific events specific to local community or state, and a park that is home to unique natural features. So we hope that we will be able to apply for both of these parks as, as they do meet this criteria, and those, with those, the purpose of both of those resolutions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number 15, consideration action to approve resolution number 2018-051 declaring Washington Park as a local historical park.
Ditto.
Okay, motion to approve?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have action item number 16, consideration action to award a con, a term contract for delinquent ad valorem tax collection services for the City of Brownsville.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city commissioners. This item is to award a contract for ad valorem delinquent tax collection services. Legal advertisements appear in the Brownsville Herald two-time, April 29th, May 6th. Propose, pre-proposal meetings were conducted May 16th. Seal proposals were received May 23rd. Evaluation committee was set up. Names of the evaluation members are in your packet. The committee scheduled interviews on, on July 24th. It was after several meetings, the, and after the interviews, the committee scored and submitted, and submitted their scores. Based on their scores, the, the scores are very tight, there were less than four points between them. After they, they ranked the, the highest ranking firm, negotiations followed up with purchasing finance department. Based on the recommendations of the committee, they're, they're recommending that the award be granted to Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, and Collins. One of the items I want to add is, both of these vendors are qualified and experienced to do the work, and either one or the contract is, would be indifferent for the finance department. Any questions?
Mayor, I move to deny the contract, and I move to award to Lime, Barker, Bowman, and Seck.
I will second that.
I'm sorry?
I second it.
You seconded? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action item number 17, consideration action to remove Trey Mendez from the Main Street Advisory Board or the Historic Preservation and Design Review Board to give effect to the newly enacted board appointment policy.
Would you approve?
Second.
Remove him from which one?
The Historic Preservation, I believe, because he's already served seven years as chairman, and I think he has a lot to offer us on the Main Street Advisory Board, because he has a lot of knowledge of the downtown area, and is one of the most affluent people who knows how to best direct the downtown area.
Is that what he prefers? I should have asked that first before I seconded. Is that what he prefers?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
What, in, in other words, did, was a letter sent, did he, did he wish to continue, or do we know?
We did not get a reply back from him, but the letter was sent to him. We did not get anything stating whether he wished to stay on, or he wished to be removed.
Okay, well, Trey is here, can, would it be out of order, councilor, if I asked him whether you'd like to stay? No? Okay. Very good. Then, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
He will remain on the Main Street Advisory Board? Okay.
Mayor, if the motion could be a little bit more specific, I don't believe it, it had everything before everybody voted.
Okay.
Does he have a choice of which one he wants to stay on, or what?
He does, and I believe he's been given that opportunity, and according to city secretaries...
I think the idea is you can't do both, and so I, I think the choice ought to be the person that's there. Like, you know, I mean, like I said, I thank Trey very much for all your service, and it, it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, so...
I spoke to him, and he, he let me know that...
You, you guys work that out, okay?
So, are you going to redo the motion?
Do you want us to redo the motion, or? Okay, so I'll redo the motion, if that's allowed, or who made the motion?
You did.
I did?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will move to leave Trey Mendez on the Main Street Advisory Board.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Trey.
I love how I can't remember what I did, you know, like, one minute before.
Item number 18.
Next, we have action item number 18, consideration in action to remove Dylan Vanderfort from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to give effect to the newly enacted board appointment policy.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, now this one, I think, I, did I, did we see something he wished to continue serving?
Yes, we did receive an email from him.
Okay. Okay, I would, I would urge the commission to consider letting him voluntarily...
We already, we already have a, a first motion and a second motion to remove him.
I know, I realize that, and so that's just part of the discussion, I mean, I just... Yeah, but we got this, this email that says he wishes to continue serving, right? Is that what, is that correct?
Yes.
Sorry, that's, that's all I'm saying. Anyway, you have a motion, and you have a second.